It is six o'clock and the Curville City Council is now in session. Ms. Eichner is going to lead us in prayer and pledge the flag. If you'll please stand.
Would you bow with me and join in a moment of silence for the tragedy in our community this past weekend? Lord, we stand before you tonight with hurting hearts, hurting because people were badly injured, hurting because young, innocent lives were taken, hurting because we just can't understand. We just ask you, Lord, that you wrap your arms of love and care around all the families that were involved in this tragedy. Help them, help us somehow to know, to feel, and to trust in you. And lastly, Lord, we just can't say thank you enough for the wonderful, caring, and very professional first responders who were once again called upon to do something for which they trained but hope to never have to do. Our community is so blessed by their presence. Lord, it's in your name that we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
As we begin tonight, I have a brief statement to read from me as mayor. Our hearts are hurting for the deaths of two children Saturday at the drag races at the airport and for those injured. The Curville Police Department will be doing a thorough investigation of this tragic accident and report out their findings. Yesterday, I requested but did not mandate flags in Curville to fly and have staff this week. This was to show concern and sympathy for the two little boys who died at the races. Some have objected to this request. Yes, I understand that only the president and governor can mandate flags lowered to have staff. I was simply seeking one more way for this community to be reminded of a tragedy that has impacted all of us. We have announcements now of community interest. Mr. Kenyus.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two events that are coming up, one this weekend, one next weekend, and both of them promise to be a lot of fun. Friday, excuse me, Saturday night is our Family Fright Night. We are so happy to have this back this year. I encourage everybody who's never been out to come out because you're going to see the most imaginative and fun costumes. Just a lot of fun to be out there and see these kids dressed up. That is from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Louise Hayes Park, and then I would encourage everybody to stick around because Movies in the Park starts right after that, and it's right there. And I think our showing Saturday night is Hocus Pocus. So, a lot of fun, fun event this Saturday night. And then we have next Saturday night, another event, and this is also by the Parks and Recreation Department. The Park and Watch Drive-In Movie is returning to Curville Shriner Park, and that will begin at 7:00 p.m. or dark. $15 per vehicle if you order ahead of time, and you can order those tickets online. $20 at the gate. The movie is The Grinch. I went to the first one that we did this year. You get to hear the sound through your car radio stereo, and it was a lot of fun, very well attended, and I think we'll have a good turnout for this one, too. So, a couple of big events coming up. Looking forward to them.
All right. Any other items of community interest? Okay. If not, I would like for Fire Chief to join me down below, and then we've got Public Works recognition as well. You have just heard recognition for our first responders. Folks, we really do appreciate what they do, and that sometimes it is very tough. The City of Curville proclamation, whereas the City of Curville is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living in and visiting Curville, and home fires are a serious public safety concern. And whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association, home fires killed 2,770 people in the U.S. in 2019, and fire departments responded to 3,000, 300,000, sorry, 339,500 home fires, and the majority of fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home. Smoke, whereas smoke alarms smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you have little as two minutes to escape to safety. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, excuse me, in half. And whereas residents must make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention, uh, Prevention Week theme is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety effectively serves to remind us, it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon, carbon monoxide alarms. Now, therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Curville, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Fire Prevention Month, and urge citizens and visitors of Curville to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Safety Prevention Month. Chief, any words?
So, today we have with us our Fire Marshal, Jason Lackey, so he's headed this up in the fire prevention. So, getting out to the schools, about 3,000 kids is what they reached out to, going to how many different schools or programs? About 20 different campuses they went to, got all these stuff. The guys came out there, they stuffed these for the kids, and really got to present that. It felt good to get back out there this year, didn't get to do it last year like we did, so it felt good to get back in the schools with them. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Now, I assume Mr. Barron will receive this next proclamation and members of Public Works.
In the city street category, the award goes to the City of Curville Street Division for their work on Third Street laying 950 tons of D-mix to level up and resurface the project. The raiders commented on a smooth, continuous map with no segregation or irregularities. It had an excellent transition into the bridge, given the change in elevation and the angle of approach. Congratulations to the City of Curville Street Division on an excellent partnership and a beautiful project.
Citizens have indicated that streets are the number one need that we deal with. Also related to that is drainage, and the city has really ramped up both of those in the last couple of years. Let me read this proclamation. City of Curville Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Public Works Streets Division on receiving the 2021 TXAPA Quality Asphalt Pavement Award. The Public Works Streets Division achieved this honor from the Texas Asphalt Paving Association for their outstanding work done on Third Street from Travis to Tybee Street. City staff nominated this project to the TXAPA, which received nominations from throughout the state of Texas. Paving professionals evaluate and rate asphalt projects based on production, placement, and quality assurance. Streets Division's managers, Joel Miners and Brendan Kelly, exemplify great leadership, and their staff performs at levels that guarantee excellence. The Streets Division is a valued asset to our community, and receiving this TXAPA achievement has earned them this recognition. So, I present this to you. Mr. Barron and the crew. This is, this is the award receipt.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay. Listen, when you see these guys working out on the streets, whether it's reconstruction streets, it's paving, whatever, give them a break, don't go by too fast, and maybe you can wave at them, too. All right? Okay. Any words?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, citizens, for appreciating these guys. They do a lot of work for all of us. They're out there day and night responding to downed trees, floods, not only paving, but they're, they're, they're there for us every, every moment of the day. So, thank you for the acknowledgement, and these are the men that do it for you. So, appreciate you.
Mr. Barron, by the way, has, who is Director of Public Works, has now been named Executive Director of Public Works in Engineering. So, congratulations. Let me mention our couple of changes, procedural changes. One is, in our procedures, if a council member is going to speak, he or she's first to be recognized by the mayor. And I have not held to that, but I think it's something important, so we're not speaking over each other, interrupting each other. All it means is, look at me, I give you a sign, and you go. Also, and we've done this before, tonight, we're going to go on each of, each parts of the agenda. When the council responds, we begin with Place 1, then Place 2, 3, 4, and to the mayor. All right, we have the visitors and citizens forum. Let me mention a few things about that. This agenda item is provided to allow citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. And do we have anyone signed up for tonight's citizens forum?
Yes, sir, we have five.
Okay, all right. No discussion may take place on the items or the comments, but since items are not posted, the council discuss, uh, council will not be discussing subjects raised, but may later refer questions to staff to follow up. Each individual has four minutes. If you'll come to the front and give us your name and address, and then speak to us. All right?
Linda Rector.
Okay.
Linda Rector, 705 Water Street, Curville. I'm just wanted to speak in support of the resolution amending the membership of the Curville Main Street Advisory Board. I'm currently the president of that, and I think that this is an excellent move. It'll broaden membership qualifications, and I think business owners, it's very good to include them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Rector.
Thank you, Council. Bill Rector, 705 Water Street. Want to tell you what a phenomenal job you are doing as council people. I was thinking today, as I was driving down the street, what a difference there is in our street system today versus February. Remember how the potholes were everywhere, and we're driving down, you saw the video, with wonderful pavement, smooth roads? What a difference in just a few months. Thank you very much for that. And while I'm here, as a member of the Main Street Advisory Board, I would like to also say that I recommend to you the changes that you're making on membership that is going to allow some very qualified people who might not otherwise be able to serve on the Main Street Advisory Board to be able to do so. Sometimes the business owner or the property owner doesn't have the time to devote to the Main Street Advisory Board. This will help very qualified people to be able to do that, and thank you for that consideration.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Hunter.
Susan Hunter, 2420 Berkdale Lane. Good evening, and I'd like to thank the council for giving me an opportunity to speak. I sent an email to all of you yesterday, but I wanted to follow up today in person because, to me, this is an urgent matter. And I also want to thank Councilman Garcia for his prompt acknowledgement of my email and his thoughtful response. So, I am here because of City Ordinance 2021-04, Sections 26 through 38, which pertained to the building of fences. I was unaware of this ordinance, which passed on January 26th of this year. When I replaced the fence in my backyard in a previous year, I checked and found no ordinances that would impact my project. We began construction of the new fence in September to make our front yard safer. We live directly adjacent to Highway 173, so you can imagine the speeds at which vehicles exit onto my street. I take responsibility for the fact that I should have ensured no changes were made this year, but I didn't. But I'm hoping this issue can be resolved in an amicable, community-oriented manner. I received my notice of violation on September 28th. I immediately contacted Development Services to remedy this, as my intent was never to be noncompliant with the city. My application was denied due to materials of my fence. Note that nowhere in the ordinance pertaining to fences was it specified that a permit will not be issued for a four-foot-tall fence which isn't made of steel or wrought iron. After researching Article 8, Sections 50 through 60, which deal with residential zoning districts, I learned that a permit for a fence over 30 inches will be issued if the fence is ornamental. In this particular code, ornamental is not defined as anything other than not chain link, and our fence contains no chain link components. I am in no way saying that there isn't an ordinance that specifies site, incites materials, but please understand that for the average citizen, deciphering what these ordinances mean and knowing where to look for each department within the city is extremely confusing. When I watched the recording of the meeting in which the ordinance was unanimously passed, it was passed with provision that penalties would be waived for the first year. I feel that being found in violation and possibly facing fines and court dates is the steepest penalty of all. I received a call this morning from Guillermo Garcia and Drew Paxton with the Planning Division. They professionally and politely informed me that there will be a meeting on December 2nd to address these incidents, as I'm not the only citizen in Curville who's misunderstood the permitting process. I'm glad to know the city is working on this problem, but I would still like to make my voice heard by all of you. Because my fence in no way impedes vision or drainage and only enhances curb appeal and safety, and it does not infringe on easements or property rights of others, I humbly ask the council for discretion and leniency and to follow the spirit rather than the letter of this ordinance. My husband and I are just average, hard-working, middle-class citizens. We're proud to be part of the Curville community, and we would like to think that our city never intended for citizens to face these sorts of snares for something as harmless as a well-built fence. I'm asking you all to consider expanding the definition of ornamental fences to include other sorts of materials that do not detract from property values, pose a danger to citizens, or interfere with drainage or emergency services. Another reasonable option would be allowing a variance permit specifically for fencing, provided the fence is well-built and maintained. I believe that the city enacted this ordinance in good faith, and I hope the city understands that I, too, was and am acting in good faith. And I sincerely hope we can work together to find a fair, sensible resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Barudy.
George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. First, I'd like to thank, I guess it's Parker Brown, for sponsoring the chair I'm sitting in this evening. So, the first thing is, I asked about this a while back, the stoplight at Water Street and Earl Garrett, the fact that it blinks at a weird time. It's blinking, you'll all see it when you leave here, between 7:00 and midnight, and it goes solid again at midnight. It seems to me they probably programmed it and meant for it to go blinking between maybe midnight and 7:00 in the morning. I don't know. But if somebody could look into that and see about switching it to the more appropriate time. The other thing is, I've been watching this, the fire lane on Bluff Ridge. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, but it was a to-do, I don't know, three or four years ago. Fire lane going up the hill at Bluff Ridge was the adjacent property owner was trying to ban, get it abandoned by the city. The neighborhood kind of stood up and said, no, we'd really like to keep this here. It's added to the safety of their neighborhood, and so that was what was happening. Well, in the interim, the adjacent landowner has applied and received a fence permit. I don't know, I haven't pulled the permit to see, but it now has gates on the bottom end of the fire lane and is expected to go to the top end. But in constructing his house on there, he now has two mounds of dirt blocking the top end of the fire lane, which could not, I would imagine, be approved. The other is the fence that got built there, while ornamental, was built, attached to the fire lane curb. I'm not sure that passes code. I guess what I'm getting at is, the neighborhood hasn't really, um, they got tired of pushing for it, and I'm just asking as a citizen, council maybe look into the situation. I don't know where to call in the city to talk about it, but I don't believe that fire lane's been abandoned yet. I don't think it should be abandoned, and the access, while on an easement of a particular property owner, is actually access providing safety to the entire neighborhood at the top there. And I would, I would encourage you to look into it and potentially get that fence moved over in a proper place. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Wolf.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Wolf. Live at 509 North Buckboard. This Thursday morning, the Texas Transportation Commission Board Directors has their regular monthly meeting. That'd be the Tech dot board. And on the agenda, an item, under Item 6B, is an application from the City of Curville for, it was phrased, it was a very small little box that they had to put a description in. So, it just says Wesley and Cully Drive Pedestrian Improvements dash Sidewalks. I'd like to know if that application that's being considered by the board includes the narrowing of the lanes on the Sidney Baker Bridge. And I believe under state law, under having to do with visitors forum, you'd be able to answer that question, Mr. Mayor, as either a yes or a no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Next.
That's all the citizen speakers.
Okay, all right. Any response from staff?
To any particular item or?
On the last item.
Uh, yes, as you recall, we briefed the city council previously on revisions to previous Tech Dot Transportation Alternative Program application, essentially condensing those to, for the most part, sidewalk enhancements in gap areas located west of Highway 16 and south of Thompson Drive, located along that Wesley-Cully area. So, that's currently in the review process by Tech Dot. There's no further action required of the city council until the point where Tech Dot does or does not potentially approve that grant program, at which point then, obviously, it would come back before the city council for any additional approvals for construction.
Okay, all right. Come now to the consent agenda. Is McLean, has anyone asked to pull any of these items?
Yes, sir. There's two items that citizens have wished to pull. 4B, as in boy, 4E, as in Edward.
Good. You say 4B and 4E?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Counselor?
Um, I'll pull 4A, just for a question.
So, I'll move to approve items 4C, 4D, 4F, 4G, and 4H. I'll second that.
Got a motion second for the approval of those items, and we'll come back to the others. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Garcia on 4A.
Thank you. Looking at the resolution, I guess it's just a question for staff. On the second page, it talks about how we're not, and I think this is a great idea, and we talked about this last time when we made appointments to the Main Street Advisory Board, but it talks about there, they can, there can be a relationship between an individual who's appointed to the board and there being a relationship with the property owner or the business owner, and that individual's allowed to serve on the board. The last sentence that we're adding here says, where such relationship ceases, ceases to exist, they're, basically, their appointment, immediately, they resign. So, I was just curious, how are we going to keep track of, of that? Are we going to require them to submit to us when their, that relationship ceases to exist, so we know when people come off and on boards?
Yeah, but functionally, you know, when we would have orientation with these individuals, we would let them know in those specific circumstances that, you know, if their relationship with that business or property owner changes, that they would need to notify us.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Just curious on that.
All right.
Um, if there's nothing else, I'll move to approve Resolution Number 44-2021.
Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Um, two, two citizens have signed up to speak on 4A in case it was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah.
That's okay.
Okay. Then, yeah, let's hear those citizens.
Linda Rector.
Okay.
Bill Rector.
All right. Okay, do I hear a motion on 4A?
Yes, that, that motion was to approve Resolution Number 44-2021.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. And 4B? Do we have someone to speak to that?
Just here to answer questions. My hair just go.
Okay.
Citizen Speaker Jerry Wolf is the one that pulled it.
All right.
Uh, Jerry Wolf, just like to know what this is about. I think something of this sounds pretty important. I think the citizens of Curville need to know some information about it. There's nothing in the agenda, any additional information that re-describes what this item is about.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barron?
Good evening, Mayor. This, this agenda item is about a, a grant from ACOG. It's to perform the hazardous household waste. It's actually for funds to perform the hazardous household waste. Very well go to them every other year, and that's a grant for $25,000. The cost, the cost of the event's about $40,000. We just had it this last weekend. It turned out to be really successful by our standards. We, so far, we've got about $42,000 worth expense for that event. But we've picked up a lot of things throughout the community. We've picked up a lot of things throughout the community, so this is just ACOG's willingness to help us pay for this event.
Okay, clarify the amount?
Twenty-five thousand dollars for this.
Twenty-five thousand, okay.
This is an annual event.
It's an annual event, we're only able to apply for this grant every other year.
Yeah, okay.
For hazardous?
Household.
Waste.
Waste.
Household waste.
All right, okay. All right, do we have a motion on four B?
I'll move that we approve resolution number forty-nine dash twenty-two-one.
I'll second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hands, and it's unanimous. And then four E, we have someone to speak to that?
Yes, sir, we have two people, George Burdi.
Okay.
George Burdi, sixteen sixteen Glen Road, and I apologize for not seeing the meeting yesterday, I don't know if they explained what this is specifically going to be about other than what's in the agenda bill, so forgive me again, I'm just speaking to the agenda bill. It discusses the, the, it calls it an additional, an amendment to an agreement, and it appears more like a new agreement, but the biggest thing is, I, I'm a little confused. Well, first off, let me say, anything I say is in no way indicative of my feelings towards the building or what they've done in the building, it's got nothing to do with that, nobody's against the project, or at least I'm not suggesting that. My issue is with the fact that this is a project that's complete, and what we're, according to the agenda bill, funding is something to pay for debt incurred from unknown theater conditions and delays from COVID-nineteen. Sounds all well and good, except for the fact that our policies, not laws, but our policies suggest from our, was it, four B sales tax funding request guidelines, for no business incentives if construction has commenced, no funding agreement shall be approved if the application was filed after the commencement of any construction alteration installation. And then in the, another economic development incentive policy, it says it's not the intent of this policy to consider a project that is already underway, as originally planned when application is received. Policy aside, it only makes sense if the project's already complete, what are we actually funding? We're not actually getting, they're not investing with that money, they're not investing into more, they're just paying off debt from the original. I think that's potentially violates the constitution, the Texas constitution about giving away something, because we're not actually, yes, there's a clawback, but they're not actually using the money to invest in new things above and beyond what's already here now. So, the, the project seems, I mean, I'm not even sure what project we're talking about. If, again, if I misunderstood the agenda packet, you know, I apologize, but that's what the agenda packet says, so it's, it's paying past due debt. And I'm just, well, that's good enough, I mean, the, the so-called clawback, I guess, is an increased attendee in years four and five of this agreement, so it's lengthening that, but again, I don't see that as an amendment to the agreement, it's, it's not buying anything. So I would, I would question the validity of actually doing this in this fashion, maybe a different funding source to accomplish the same thing. And so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any staff response or clarification from Arcadia Live?
I'm not sure, the city attorney would also like to elaborate, but you know, essentially, this is a funding agreement that does allow for an additional grant. Again, there's been a number of funding agreements in the past where the EIC has stepped in and made amendments to existing agreements to help projects move towards completion when they've had elements, cost overruns. As you may recall, there was an amendment that was completed for the Doyle Community Center most recently, prior to that, the Tennis Center, and both were, you know, construction-related, right? And so, this is very similar in keeping with that, those agreements.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion on this item, four E?
I think we still have another citizen speaker. Excuse me, Mayor. I think we still have another citizen speaker.
Oh, do we do, we do have a citizen speaker, sorry.
Yes, sir, Jerry Wolf.
Okay. He's passing, okay? All right. Do I hear a motion on four E?
I move that we approve the amendment to the Economic Development Incentive Agreement between the Fourth on the River and the City of Curville.
All right, do we have a second?
One second.
I have a question. Thank you. Did, just to clarify, did you say that the existing agreement has a clause that allows an additional grant? Or is that what this is doing? Because I know it's-
This agreement allows a definitional element, as you can see on the second page, on number two, under now therefore, that is additional grant.
All right. Do we got a motion second? All in favor, if you let it be known by the raised hand? Okay? And all opposed, a lax sign? Okay, it's four O.
Wait, we need to get a vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read this real quick, because we didn't, trying to make sure I had discussion first. Okay, against?
Okay, five O.
No, four one.
Four one, I'm sorry, four one, okay. All right, we come now to a public hearing, and if you'll read this item into the record, Ms. McLean.
Public hearing for NAP Force Main and Scepter Improvements Project Environmental Information Document, EID, as required by the Texas Water Development Board Funding Application.
All right. Kyle Burrows, Burrow, would you please explain this one?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have Ben Haygood here with me from Freezing Nichols. Essentially what this is, it's a requirement by the Water Development Board, whenever we go for federal funding, that is administered through them to do the, what's called the EID, the Environmental Information Document. It's something that we have to publish in the newspaper, we did that back in September twenty-fifth, and then we have to hold the public hearing, there's no action by council. Ben and myself are here for any questions that council or citizens may have.
All right. We have another speaker?
It's a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Council, any questions? Okay. Now open the public hearing, if anyone, and you don't have to be signed up, wants to speak on this matter. Okay? Not hearing anyone? The open, the public hearing is closed at six thirty-seven. Okay. Comments, beginning of place one?
No, no, sir, thank you.
Ms. Igu.
No, I'm just wondering, do you have a presentation for us? Do you have something that, I mean, you've come and you're here, and tell us about it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to give an overview of, of what we, we've prepared, so as Kyle mentioned-
Thank you.
The Texas Water Development Board has some environmental requirements, and so I led the environmental evaluation as well as the preparation of that document, the Environmental Information Document. So we look at a lot of different things related to the environment, both the, the natural environment and social implications for this project, and things like the floodplain, streams and wetlands, protected species, we look at all of that, and so we've done that evaluation. We do not believe that there is a significant adverse impact. This goes from the NAP Lift Station, some existing Santeri sewer facilities, to an existing manhole, and we tie these, these new Santeri sewer pipes to that existing infrastructure. So, at this stage, we are affording the public the opportunity to comment. The EID was made available about thirty days ago for the public to, to read and to comment on it, but the project's a, a good one, and the Texas Water Development Board will review the Environmental Information Document at a future date, once this gets documented, as well as the resource agencies provide any comments. So we're currently waiting for agencies to provide comments. We've received nothing to date that indicates that there's any issues, so that's pretty much a, a summary of, of where we stand on, on this environmental evaluation.
So, we're good to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
For now.
Ms. Clarkson?
So, for, for clarification, the Texas Water Development Board has already granted us funds. These are remaining from a completion of projects that we've done, and we're reallocating those funds for this NAP Lift Force Main.
That's correct, we've applied to Texas Water Development Board to allow for them-
Allow us to use those.
We're currently going through that application process now, they've given us preliminary approval, and so we are going through the engineering efforts and the environmental efforts to continue that process.
So this is, this is not asking for an allocation of new funds, we're just asking to reallocate because we have funds remaining from our previous-
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Okay, any other comments? Okay?
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have, we have a motion on this matter? I'm sorry, no action required, right, okay, move on. Okay, six A, Ms. McLean?
Ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-seven, second reading. An ordinance amending chapter sixty of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas. Such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of a point seven-one acre property currently addressed as fourteen-seventy-eight State Highway, one-seventy-three Banderas Highway, consisting of part of lot one of the Overlook Hill subdivision within the City of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, from a neighborhood commercial zoning district C-one to a single-family residential zoning district R-one, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Council, any, any questions or comments? I'll start with place one.
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-seven on second reading.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor, if you'll let it be known by the raised hand? Okay? Passes unanimously. Seven A, Ms. McLean?
Street Maintenance Program Update and Professional Services Agreement with Six S Engineering Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-two fiscal year street maintenance projects in the amount of eighty-nine thousand dollars. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. David, you gonna give us a background on this?
Yes, sir, I am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we'll get started with just a quick, a quick update on the pavement management system. Little history on this is, twenty-sixteen, when we first completed the first assessment of, of our road network, which consists of about two-hundred-and-eighty lane miles. From twenty-sixteen to twenty-nineteen, in that timeframe of that first assessment, we completed one-hundred-and-twenty-eight lane miles of street maintenance. Then in twenty-nineteen, we decided to update the, the plan, evaluate it, look for improvements, and we came back, back with the second master plan, which sort of gave us another, another roadmap as far as what, what maintenance to, to, to conduct. So, as you're aware, in twenty-nineteen, we also had a community survey results, which indicated ninety-four percent of residents support capital funding for these pavement projects. Fall twenty-nineteen, we prioritized some street reconstruction and maintenance projects, funded by certificates of obligation, as well as the general fund. Part of that second master plan, we went ahead and conducted from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, was an additional eighty-eight lane miles on the street maintenance. Twenty-twenty, we did phase A of the, the major reconstruction, we completed six streets. Phase B, which is ongoing, we have seven streets which are scheduled and ongoing right now, and that completes the thirteen streets for that segment. These are some maintenance or pavement management activities that we have with our streets, we have crack seal, slurry seal, our patch mill and overlay, and our pavement reconstruction. There's brief descriptions on there as far as who's responsible for that maintenance activity. Our staff is involved with all four of these, we do the preparation for the crack seal and slurry seal, however, the finished product is done by a contractor. We also do the mill and overlay in-house, as well as some pavement reconstruction. But recently, we've been contracting some of that out for efficiencies, and it seems to be working, working fine. Some improvement strategies, we want to reassess the, the streets annually, we also want to update the master plan every three to five years, just to make sure that we're consistent with what we're doing now, is you're seeing it down the road with the improvements. We also want to identify new pavement techniques and improve materials, combine street segments to minimize construction costs, we're always reevaluating the budget, repair techniques, and street prioritization. We also want to keep investing in our staff, equipment, work orders, so we always preach to our, our staff to keep, keep growing in knowledge, try and learn new techniques that are out there. We're also going to try and streamline engineering services and bidding processes. Instead of going out for design for our crack seal, slurry seal, patch repairs at different times, we want to just do it all at once, so that's what part of this, this item as well.
Looking on that slide, I mean, interrupt, but, and you might have said it, I might have missed it, but looking at the second bullet point, update the master plan, are you talking about, when you, when you use the word update, are you saying update in terms of going out, seeking a consultant, and redoing the master plan every three to five years, or updating it in the terms of looking at what we've completed, and taking those portions out and sticking with the left of what's left to do?
Right, good, good question. So what we'll do is we'll reassess all the streets, and you're just doing another, a complete reassessment, and it takes into consideration what we've already done, and if we want to handle the PCI scores of pavement condition index differently, they're weighted by your, how, how smooth the ride is, different factors are a part of that, so we'll, we'll change that up as, as needed. So it's pretty much an assessment of the whole network again.
Using, and we'll go out and get a consultant to do all that, we won't do it ourselves?
Correct, it's a consultant, Fugro is who did it before.
Yeah, as you may recall, we actually use a, a system, an evaluation system, that is very objective in nature, in that it is able to, they actually use a number of different sensors, lasers, and other elements that actually drive the roadways to give us, you know, a, an accurate assessment rather than just a, a visual assessment of staff. So that, that's what we mean when we say every three to five years, we want to go through, we want to see not only how some of those roadways that have not received a maintenance technique are holding up, but also the ones that have received the maintenance technique, and see if they are performing in the way that, that we want them to perform.
Okay.
Thank you. So, up to date, we've completed two-hundred-and-sixteen, two-hundred-and-sixteen-point-four-two lane miles, and here's sort of a breakdown on the, the slurry seal from twenty-sixteen to nineteen, averaging fourteen, a little over fourteen lane miles a year, and you'll see what we've done in twenty and twenty-one. Same thing for crack seal, we have some averages there. Now, slurry seal and crack seal, those, they, they differ, because we'll do lump packages in different fiscal years, so one thing to note here is on the mill and overlay, our streets division has been doing some major improvements on their efficiencies, and you can see the average was three-point-six-one from twenty-sixteen to twenty-nineteen. Twenty-twenty, we jumped up to four-point-seven-four, and this last year, we just completed seven-point-zero-seven, so that's, that's huge improvements.
Right.
Same thing on pavement reconstruction, you'll see the averages there, two-point-six-five, jumped up to four-point-two-four, and now four-point-eight-six. And then keep in mind, the, the total network is two-hundred-and-eighty lane miles, so making some good progress. And here's just a snapshot of year three, which is coming up in twenty-twenty-two, mill and overlay, crack seal, and slurry seal. These are some of the proposed streets that we have. Our department reviews these streets, we make sure there's no utility conflicts, other things that may prevent this street from receiving, you know, the, the treatment. Keep in mind, this assessment just assesses the street, the top portion, so in-house will look at any utility conflicts that, that are underneath it, you know, we don't want to tear up a street for utilities after we've already done the maintenance on it. And again, thanks again to our crew and, and support from everybody, on, on their efforts out here to make this, these streets here in the community great, did a great job, so thanks again. And this time, do you have any questions?
Hey, questions or comments, beginning of place one?
Thank you, I just want to confirm, have we completed everything that we've set out to do for this fiscal year?
Yes, we have.
So nothing's going to be rolling over to next year in terms of this agreement, and-
No.
So we're, we're on schedule, and-
Yes, sir, we are.
And will we-
Let me see.
So I do want to clarify that in regards to the maintenance aspects, that's correct. Street reconstruction, as you recall, our tree is capital projects, and so we have a number of those. We initiated a big chunk of those over the course of the summer. Those have carried on into this fiscal year. The vast majority are the ones I think that we've started at this point. We actually anticipate being done by the end of this calendar year. But I do want to make sure you understand that there's a, there is an overlap there in, in fiscal years on the street reconstruction effort, which are obviously major capital projects.
I was just trying to make sure that we're not pushing anything. If anything was rolling over from this year to the next year, we're not pushing something out from what we anticipate is going to be done next year, and it's going to be an ongoing ripple effect. That's not what we're doing right.
Correct.
Want to make that clear?
Yep.
Mayor, I'll just clarify that as well. So as far as rollover, you, we're, we're still in the paving season. The slurry seal has not happened for 2021.
Yep.
So that, that contractor is coming in, I believe, in the next week or two. So that, you know, as far as the carryover, we're, we're still in the paving, the 2021 paving season. Fiscally, it will hit on, on this fiscal year, just like, you know, if you look at the fiscal 21, that actually had October, November, 2020 slurry seal. So that, that work has not been done. The patching prep work for that has, but the slurry seal end product has not.
Okay. So just, just to understand correctly, we have the fiscal year, and then we have the whole year. And so because of the paving season that we are using kind of overlaps in that manner?
That's correct.
That's what it takes.
Yeah, essentially paving season goes through the summer and part of the fall.
Right.
So there is some overlap there in regards to the fiscal years.
That's what that is?
Yes, correct.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Carson?
Yeah. So to clarify, when we talk about overlaps or running over on years, we're not talking about pushing that money into what we're budgeting. That still stays on top of what our, our budget is. We're not pushing that money into our next budget cycle, right?
Correct. Financially, we are striving to spend every dollar that.
Keeping that, right?
Yes. Because if you remember on that pavement management report, we had to increase the budget. We've allocated, I think, $2 million on, on this fiscal 22. So that's, you know, essentially what this year three list of streets is going to do. We're going to, as, as we get more budget, we've got to increase the, the number of streets that we've been getting, and that's where public works and engineering. We'll get with the consultant. Based on the baseline number of streets that they've had, how does that match up with our, our budget that council has approved and the prices that we've been getting in?
So now can I ask about a couple of specific projects since y'all are here?
No, it's specific street.
I just have continued questions about the project on Westminster, when that one is going to be kicked off.
Okay. So right now, we're in a holding pattern. We've had some coordination efforts on the design to get Atmos. You know, they, they have to get the project presented to their board, their, their governing body, and we're hoping to bring this to you in first part of 22. We were hoping to already be there, but we wanted, before we go, let a project.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't want to bring you a, a number and then say, okay, yeah, we're going to wait six months.
So if you live on Westminster or you travel down that road, you can, you will not expect to see any kind of change to the landscape until next calendar?
Correct. Hopefully springtime.
All right.
All right. Ms. Agner?
No, no questions other than I, it's not a question, it's just a comment. It's, it's good to have to be in one line or work, run around the block or do something. It's great to see the work being done.
All right. Ms. Hughes?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I just want to comment on the improvement strategies. I feel like these improvement strategies are exceptional because we got behind in streets and care of the streets. But this is a good plan that we can keep up, identify problems, and be ready to get after it. Because, I mean, water and streets are the two main ways the citizens encounter the city, and we want both of those to be good and safe. Thank you. All right. We have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion on this matter?
I will move that we approve the street maintenance program update and the professional services agreement with 6S Engineering for the 2022 fiscal year, street maintenance projects in the amount of $89,000.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it is unanimous.
Thank you, T. Both. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seven D. Ms. McLean?
Construction agreement with M&amp;C Fonseca Construction Company, Inc., for the Take It Easy RV Drainage Project in the amount of $1,768,775. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Okay.
This is a long-awaited, much overdue project, as you're very well aware of. We put this out to bid and got really competitive bids. We're, we're glad to say we've had the coordination with TechStop continuing. So this is the, the lower portion from 27 to Guadalupe. This is going to have the box culverts and drainage improvements to help get that water, once it gets through the, the TechStop culverts, get that through. M&amp;C Fonseca has done exceptional work for Curville in the past. So this was really a, a no-brainer once we kind of looked at their, their numbers of getting, you know, good quality work for the citizens and utilizing the, the bond dollars that, that you've allocated for us.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Beginning Mr. Garcia? No?
Just to clarify, this will start basically at Highway 27 and go down to Guadalupe?
So it, it's going, just a little bit, it's, it's going to be at the right of Highway 27.
Okay.
TechStop themselves is going to be doing the work within 27. What we were hearing on that is 2023. We're, we're trying to push that up a little bit more, but they also have to do their funding mechanism. And then it will not go all the way to Guadalupe. There's a existing inlet drop structure that gets it under.
At the end, okay.
Yes. And that's what we'll be tying into.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. If there are no questions from counsel, do I hear a motion?
I will move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execution a construction contract with M&amp;C Fonseca Construction Company.
I'll second.
A motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. Seven C. Ms. McLean?
Public safety facility update and resolution number 48-2021, a resolution creating a public safety facility bond committee and appointing its members for the purpose of analyzing the feasibility of developing a public safety facility and financing such through the issuance of general obligation bonds. And.
All right.
Are two citizen speakers signed up?
Okay. All right. Mr. Hoppy?
Yes, sir. I've got a number of slides just to kind of walk through a little bit about what this resolution does. As you recall, council within future agenda item listing, asked us to bring back the, a, a resolution for you guys to stand up a citizen committee that would have a charge to review the public facility, the public safety facility item, which we've been discussing for a, a number of months most recently, but really a number of years, and wanted to go through just a little bit of history on that. And if I could ask both chiefs to actually come to the podium so you can kind of help me advance slides and answer any operational questions, or chief call at least. I think Maloney's up there, too. So again, just recalling Curville, just a major Curville 2050 item, you recall, Guiding Principle F2, placing the highest priority on public safety, police, fire, and EMS. And one of the, the bullets within that item is considering bond funding for a new public safety building or complex, and that the location of the new public safety facility should be carefully considered because of the transformational effect it could have on the surrounding area. You know, within that, within the comprehensive plan, it was clearly identified that prioritizing public safety being one of the highest priorities. Also, the community was continuing to vote adequate resources and be prepared to make strategic investments necessary to maintain the level of service that our community is asked of our, our public safety servants. Evaluating the performance of existing assets, determining what new facilities may be required, and then looking at potential locations for those facilities. So if you go to that next slide, the facility planning timeline, let me just kind of walk through these. And again, we elaborated on these back in the, the summer timeframe when we were looking at the certificates of obligation. As you recall, previously approved capital budgets back to 2016 identified a new public safety complex as a need. I think we, we walked through a number of the deficiencies, both from a building standpoint as well as an operational standpoint. It's not just the facility maintenance item, which are, they are multi-decades old, and you've got facilities such as the municipal court, which are operating, which were meant to be temporary and have now been worked in for over 13 years. So definition of temporary there is pretty interesting. So, but not only are they not functioning from a, a standpoint of being adequate, they are also not meeting the space needs because the community has grown, those operations have grown. And so we initiated a space needs assessment in fiscal year 2018 to begin to continue this dialogue. It, and it took a 20-year outlook, so not just where Curville is at right now in those deficient buildings, but where can, what, what needs to be invested in so that way it really accommodates the community well into the future. The report was finalized in fall of 2019, and identified a few, a few key takeaways. It looked at really a three to five acre minimum for a combined public safety facility. As you recall, we've got, those areas are diffused right now. And again, it, it combines a police headquarters and, and those operational components, fire administration, so not firing EMS stations, but fire administration, the municipal court, as well as emergency operations, which really right now are very diffused across and, and subpar in a number of different facilities. We saw that in Winter Storm Uri. We were just really, you know, Chief Maloney can elaborate on his EOC, virtual EOC, he was having to run from his car because our facility didn't even have power. So, so again, emergency operations are really critical components. So three, five acre minimum, and then really looking at about 48,000 square feet of actual building area, which is a very large structure in, in the city of Curville. Began to look at real estate and exploring various options with some of the feasibility, the analysis and that space needs assessment in the 2019 and 2020 timeframe. And again, unfortunately, we had a global pandemic and recession, and so the timing wasn't, wasn't good to be bringing a multimillion dollar element to this community with a, a bond referendum. We had austere city budgets, we had mid-year budget cuts. We did, the council, again, we went through the process as debt capacity began to, to show itself within our existing property tax home. And so we began that CO discussion with you all over the course of the summer timeframe. And that really, again, was looking toward the first time really that the community had had capacity in the recent past, because in the 2019 timeframe, council moved forward with utilizing certificates of obligation regarding streets and drainage, which you just got that street presentation a minute ago. And so you know that the vast majority of that $10 million that was issued at the time, 8 million, 8.5 million went towards street reconstruction, and about 2 million was allocated towards the drainage efforts, which we've been going through on the engineering, and now bringing a project to you there at Take It Easy. So absolutely worthy projects, but absolutely took the, the capacity for us to be able to utilize that for other identified needs within that. So as that, as that property tax debt capacity began to move forward across this summer, really looked at it for two key purposes. Real estate purchase, so that way real estate could be purchased, and a design plan could then be initiated with an architecture firm to be able to bring a, a plan really to the community for any additional funding that, that may be needed. You know, unfortunately, that effort was precluded via citizen petition in, in August after the deadline that was necessary for a November 2021 ballot. And so the ability to utilize certificates of obligation for that function, for that real estate purchase, or for architectural design was precluded by the petition. The new deadline for the May 2022 ballot, for council to be able to place that on there is February 18th of 2022. So pretty short timeframe between right now and, and that deadline, obviously. Resolution, the presented to you, resolution 48-2021 establishes a public safety facility bond committee. Again, per council direction, it allows for a 10-member ad hoc citizen committee of Curville residents charged with some specific, very specific charges, working with staff and consultants to study the development, again, of a multi-department public safety facility, including KPD, KFD, and EMS administration, emergency management, and then municipal court functions, reviewing and recommending an election to the council for initiatives of bonds to fund that said facility, reviewing and recommending the needs to be funded and the size of the bond issuance, the correlation to that, and then a deadline to present the recommendation to the council by January 15th, again, so that you all have the opportunity to place that on the ballot should you choose to do so, and at the level that you choose to do so. So again, that committee will serve in an advisory capacity. It will discuss specific public safety needs. It will provide council recommendation by January 15th, and then subsequent to that day, you know, that committee will be disbanded as an official function, but will support and advocate their recommendation then going forward, as council by law doesn't have the opportunity, and the city by law does not have an opportunity to go at, can educate, can't advocate for any specific referendum item. Obviously, private citizens can, can do as they please in that regard. But would certainly, we would support that they support their own recommendation. And then in combination with that, just jumping ahead a little bit here, Mayor, seven D is a professional services contract with random scar architects. Again, the scope of services, what is asked of you tonight is to allow me to be able to finalize and execute a professional services agreement with that architecture firm, to be able to complement the effort that we would be undergoing over the next several months, to provide their professional expertise. They really specialize in not only municipal facilities, but really public safety facilities. They built a number of these across the state in the last few years. And so we feel like they would provide expertise to this committee and to be able to talk about not only the space needs assessment, which has already been conducted, but certainly the existing construction cost, the differences between the construction cost for commercial facilities and public safety facilities, which are distinct, be able to provide benchmarking tours, both virtual and facilities that they've helped construct, as well as some actual tours within the region, and then provide facilitation of some of the, the committee meetings over this next three to four months, as well as looking at some preliminary real estate and site evaluation services for council and staff. We think that construction contract, again, in, in the negotiation process, but we think that'd be about $40,000. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and certainly chiefs can, you know, as we did back in, back this summer, talk about any of the, the needs. I think they're well identified.
All right. Hold on, and if council has questions for you, let's begin place one. Mr. Garcia?
Okay. First question I have is will the committee members have access to information and documents such as the space needs assessment that you mentioned to help aid them in their discussions or any of that information that was created and done?
Any of the elements that we are legally able to share, certainly we want to, we want to talk through those, right? Certainly, there are elements that we have looked at from a real estate perspective that we need to continue to maintain our negotiating position. That way, we can maximize value for the taxpayer and they're not having to, you know, pay more for a piece of property because a, a, a real estate interest thing, you know, becomes aware that we're interested in it.
Sure. Okay. And how does council or, or staff want to do the appointment process? Should we?
What, what we're going to do is we will deal first with seven C, and then we will make the appointments, and I'll name a chairman, and then we will go to seven D.
Okay. We'll deal, we'll deal with it on the same item then, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're going to do that. If you don't mind referring to some information that was presented to you in front of you, I have two proposed amendments that I'd like to make to the resolution. One of them is an amendment in there. It currently states that the members serve without compensation. They must reside within the city limits, but also says that each council, each member serves at the pleasure of the council and may be removed or replaced at the discretion of council. An amendment I'm proposing is similar, and you have at the very back a resolution that was used to create the code review committee. A clause that was included in this resolution, and just a little bit of background, each council member appointed a certain amount of members to this code review committee as well. And a clause that was included in this resolution, if you look at the section six, that each council member was allowed to replace his or her appointees if they were unable to attend a meeting, or should they fail to attend, or should they resign or for any other reason on, on their own. So my proposed recommendation and proposed amendment to the resolution is to do the same thing and, sorry, I'm looking at my time, and include in the blue text that each council member may replace one, any one of his or her appointees by providing written notice to the city secretary, should any appointee resign, fail to attend or participate in meetings, or for any other reason without council approval. That's almost the exact wording that was taken from the CR. wording that was taken from the C R C resolution. All I included was that, um, we provide written notice to the city secretary. I think that helps staff out with keeping track of who's on what committee. The second amendment I'm proposing is to-
Let's, let's, uh, look at that first. Any, uh, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Hoppy, any comments or observations?
I, I don't have any comments. That's a policy decision for council.
All right. Um, why don't we deal with that and then go to any other amendments?
Okay. And I'll just go ahead and finish up on by saying we have, this committee is charged to go from, I guess immediately once it's passed until January 15th, council will have two meetings on November, November, December from now until then. Um, and I think it would be reasonable to allow that kind of replacement to happen as was done with the C R C and not have to reconvene the entire council to fill one of those spots should something occur.
All right. Yeah. So you're making that in a form of a motion?
I'll make that in a form of a motion to, um, amend resolution forty-eight dash 2021, um, by adopting amendment number one that's presented to you on your paper.
All right. Ms. Clarkson, you can go ahead.
Well, are we, are we acting in separate motions to this resolution? Or, I mean, are we, I, I don't understand there being a motion right now before all of the discussion. So I'm not sure what, I thought I-
Procedurally, Mr. Hoppy, it's best.
Absolutely. We can take comments in regards to the overall resolution, uh, or certainly, uh, I, I don't think Mike or I have any comments specific to that amendment, but if you have questions just regarding the resolution overall, we have to answer.
Right.
Okay. All right. You're gonna take the resolution overall, then we'll go to amendments. Okay? Any questions about the understanding, we'll come back to these-
Right.
To these, uh, suggestions.
No, I don't have any further.
Okay.
Okay, are we commenting on amendment one?
No.
No.
We're commenting on the resolution as presented in seven C.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Hughes?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, therefore, um, do we have, we've got a couple of people signed up, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we'll vote on this, we'll vote on the resolution, then come back to the amendments?
The-
I'm-
These are amendments to the resolution.
Correct. So I'm fine waiting for the citizen speakers to go, and then council can finish the rest.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, stand by, okay? All right, we have speakers?
Yes, sir, Bill Morgan.
Okay.
Bill Morgan, seventeen forty-four, Glen Road, here at Curville. My concern is, if we're going to do this as, as an ad hoc committee, are we gonna do it at the, the problem that came up with the U D C a number of years ago, it had to be a regular formed committee, had to have a secretary treasurer, you're, you're asking him to go out and raise money? Is this, is this part of what the bottom is?
Uh, yeah, yes, it is.
Then they, they should, they should be, uh-
After they present their recommendation to the city council.
They're gonna be asked as the count, as the committee to go raise money?
The committee will have the opportunity and legally can then support the, uh, bond measure.
And who, they're gonna have to have a secretary treasurer, they're gonna have to file reports with the state, are they not, as it was when the U D C was issue was there?
Ms. Hayes?
Well, you know, so the intent with the resolution is for the committee to, uh, work very quickly, diligently, um, issue, you were, you were report, and then for them to stand behind the report. In other words, not just, you know, I don't think anyone would envision doing this or would do this, but, you know, runoff and not do anything. Um, they, it would be up to them, they're, they're individuals and, and could act independently, but I think what I was thinking, uh, in drafting the resolution based on a very general idea from council from last time was that once the committee issued the report, they would be out there in the community, community acting either individually or as a group, and if they're gonna act as a group, as a pack, then they would have to follow state law. I'm not gonna be involved in that, y'all are not gonna be involved in that, that'd be up to them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I envisioned this committee just being a committee of citizens that are tasked with investigating, you know, possible pieces of real estate, possible costs, um, all of that stuff, and then coming back to us with a recommendation. And you don't have to be an ad hoc committee with a treasurer and all of that stuff to perform that function as a committee. Only when this officially goes on a bond election, do you decide whether you're going to go out and promote it and, and become an ad hoc committee, and that's their choice, not ours.
Right. Mayor, may I clarify, clarify something?
Sure.
The resolution is creating them as an ad hoc committee. So they are already gonna be an ad hoc committee.
Up until the point of, uh, providing the recommendation.
The final report.
And then at that point, essentially, that, that committee as an official city committee is, is disbanded.
Okay, all right.
Is that correct, Mike?
Yes. I mean, it'd be like the, um, um, comprehensive plan committee, you know, they, they did their work, and then they, I, I was aware of, of many, if not all of them, were behind the scenes, kind of promoting it in their neighborhoods and their churches and all that. Um, because they were, they were proud of their work, and I s- I suppose that's, that's what, what will happen here.
However, the city council cannot be out advocating.
Once you stick it on the election, you, you can't, we cannot use, uh, re- say, resources or money to promote, um, the election or, you know, the, the vote.
Right, right. Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Clarkson? On the resolution itself, anyone else?
Thank you, you do.
Okay, we have another speaker? Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir, Jerry Wolf.
Jerry Wolf, I don't mean to dominate this microphone tonight, it's just a number of topics that came up that I wanted to address. Uh, I did not get a chance to really read this in detail, but from what I gathered about it, and I think this is what this discussion should be about, I think it's just Mr., um, the previous speaker just brought it up. As I understand it, this, uh, if you're appointed, uh, as a boardman, I mean, as an ad hoc member of the ad hoc committee, you have an obligation, the way this is written, to go out and promote the bond, which may include, or it says in that res- in the resolution, does it not, to go out and seek private funds-
Mm-hmm.
-to promote the, uh, to be spent on the election to, uh, to approve the bond issue. That, and also I believe it states in there that, uh, basically, let's say the committee was, it would be ten people, let's say the, the vote is nine to one, or even seven to three of people of, being the minority with the people that are being opposed, that they are not able to, by the agreement of being on this board, to speak against the bond issue? I think that the wording I, I say, as, when, as one passed through it, sounded like that's what it was saying.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't see how you can-
My understanding is if the committee is split, as citizens, they would have the opportunity to speak against, uh, what the majority, uh, proposed.
I, I think what's confusing in here too is that section four says all committee members are charged with developing and carrying out the strategy for the successful passage of the bond election. And I think it's confusing, um, especially if this committee would be discharged upon their final report, which may be January 15th or sooner. I think it's a little confusing of how, if they're discharged at that point, how can we require members who are no longer on a committee to do something? I think it's perfectly fine with having them and, you know, everybody has the ability to go and advocate for or against something as private citizens. So I say, we leave it at that, and I think this clause may be making it really confusing.
Yeah. Uh, I disagree, but, uh, any other comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Now, procedurally, I want to make sure we do this right. Are we gonna vote on the item and then come back with proposed amendments?
I, I would think you would want to look at the amendments before, uh, you look at the overall item, because then you're voting on one resolution as amended or not.
All right. So you have, have any amendments, Mr. Garcia?
I just have two.
Okay.
And I have a motion on the table still to approve, uh, amendment number one.
Yeah, all right. Okay, amendment number one, you see in the, uh, blue there where the, um, council members would replace, uh, someone who, that they had appointed if that person's not adequately served. Do we have a second to that? Okay, that motion dies without a second. What is your second amendment?
Okay, uh, second amendment number two is to strike section four in its entirety. That's the section that we were referring to that charges the committee members to carry out the strategy for the successful passage of the bond election, and then charges them with organizing and raising private funds, um, associated with the advertising and promoting the position on the bond. Again, I'll s- I'll state my prior, um, statement or position that I think it's, you can't require committee members to do something after the committee is discharged, because they're no longer a committee. So they're no longer members of the committee. So how can you require them and charge them with doing something if they're not on the committee? Um, that's like if a member of the advisor, ma- Main Street Advisory Board were to no longer be on, but yet they're still required to do something, it just doesn't make sense. Uh, just use that board as an example. I would also like to point out, you have a couple of pieces of paper there, um, with your, I guess, papers that I have with the proposed amendments. That has information from the, um, Texas Ethics Commission, their office, um, three of those sheets are at least, saying that, uh, the advocating and passage and, or defeat of a measure, I guess we talked about this briefly, that us as council members cannot necessarily in our official capacity go out and, and try to do that, I believe, or council as a whole, as private citizens, we all can. I think it also may unintentionally be forming what's known as a special, uh, purpose committee. As we all know, for running for office, you have to file finance reports with the Texas Ethics Commission when you, uh, received campaign funds and how you spend those. And a special purpose committee, and I've seen this done with different entities who have put on a referendum or a measure on a, on a ballot, they were required to do this. And so, looking at this, you'll see that a special purpose committee as one of the, I don't know if it's included in here. Oh, it is, I'm sorry. Uh, one of the definitions of special purpose committee is one that, um, supports or opposes an identified measure. And so a committee that supports or opposes one or more identified measures is a specific purpose, a political committee. And I think that's a burden that we'd be putting on the volunteers that we're assigning to this job, and I don't think we want to put them in that type of position to have to raise the funds, keep track of it all, and of course, like a speaker just came up and said, they're gonna have to keep track of the money. So the officer positions like secretary treasurer would be necessary. So my proposal is to, I'll make a motion, then we can have a discussion, to amend resolution number forty-eight dash 2021 by, um, amending it with amendment two, which is to strike section four in its entirety.
All right. Uh, Ms. Clarkson?
You know, in listening to the conversation, uh, I do have, I do, I do understand what's being said. I also just feel like I need to say that, you know, council as a majority wanted to move forward with this project. And we were unable to do so, so now we're going through a different process. And so going through this pro- process takes away our ability to advocate for this facility. That said, when you're talking about section four, I can recognize that perhaps we don't want to charge them with that as something after their first action. So I would consider amending section four to say, should city council call an election, former committee members are allowed to carry out an informational strategy for the purpose, for the successful passage of a bond election. But I, I do think that it's important that the committee understands that if they're appointed as members, um, to the committee, that we can't force anyone to, to advocate for, for such a bond passage, but that we would encourage that, because we as council members can't facilitate that level of involvement. That's my perspective.
All right. Okay.
I would, I would agree with your changes, and, but I think the rest of it needs to stay. Again, we can't force anyone to do that. I read that last sentence more that if the committee, uh, organizes and raises, raises, uh, private funds for advertising and promoting a position, that that's up to them to do that. That's, uh, we're not, uh, we're not making them do that, it's simply, uh, something that they, they can do.
So just by changing the words charged with to, say, allowed to-
Yes.
Would kind of complete that.
All right. Ms. Hughes?
I think that would do it. Well, I sit on a committee that is tasked with taking some propositions to a bond election. And we're five people. We're not an ad hoc committee. We meet every other week for two or three or four hours, and we brainstorm and we communicate with each other, and we work on trying to get on the same page with each other for the betterment of our community. And we, I'm now on year number, finishing up year number two on this committee. And we are starting our awareness campaign. We're still not an ad hoc committee, we're still not raising money, we're just getting the word out to the citizens of the need for these propositions on the bond election. Now, once it officially, whatever that process is, that takes it to where it gets placed on the ballot, then if we want to promote it from that point forward, we have to become an ad hoc committee, and we've got to get a chair, and we've got to get a treasurer, and we've got to have meetings and minutes and all of this stuff, which we will do. But right now, I thought our mission, as we're sitting up here tonight, is to get members of our community together to investigate the opportunity to get a desperately needed K P D facility, find the best use of, of land for the project, the cost for the projects, bring it forward to council with recommendations, and then if everybody agrees that it needs to be done, then we move forward from there with forming those kinds of committees.
All right. Let, let me say, uh, that in, in, enlisting people for this committee, uh, I included that after they make a, a presentation to the council, it would be expected and hoped that they would help support that bond election. Um, I've seen that in school bond elections here, including the most recent ones, the folks that are in on the planning of the facilities and everything, or getting the initial planning done, are some of the best advocates for that facility. When I was on the foundation board of the hospital here, again, we saw that. We were in on the planning, knowing what was gonna happen, then we were ready to go raise the money and, and get what needed to be done. But again, somebody who serves on that committee to make the presentation to the council, if they opt out, they certainly have that opportunity. What I would say tonight is, uh, Mr. Garcia, if you would make your motion, and, uh-
Mayor, can I say, I hate to interrupt. Um, you know, I, I think we've said this earlier. Uh, so you all had a general discussion on your, on your last meeting about future agenda items, and you wanted this brought back. So we worked as quickly as we could, and, um, you know, in, in these kinds of, um, I've, I've never set up or drafted a resolution to set up, uh, this kind of committee, a bond committee.
Mm-hmm.
So I borrowed, right? Borrowed from other cities. And so I, you know, remembered you all talking about the expectation that the, the committee would issue a report, and then they'll go out there and be, um, you know, they, they, they would all, you know, stand behind the report and go promote the report. Um, that said, that's why section four was dropped in there. But taking what you all have talked about tonight, um- But taking what you all have talked about tonight, if you, if you bear with me, I think I can help you with, with a new Section Four, okay? And we could, you know, I don't think we ought to delay this. I think, I think after I read this as slow as I need to and reread it, I think maybe it'll solve the issue. So starting with Section Four, I would propose that you all adopt this amendment, or these amendments. Should city council call an election, all committee members are urged to develop and carry out an informational strategy for the successful passage of a bond election. I think the next sentence is, it should be, should remain, so in other words, it's, will state, in conformance of law, upon calling an election, to consider the possible issuance of bonds, no public funds may be utilized to promote the successful passage of the bond election. And then the next sentence is deleted, and I would propose the following sentence. Should the committee engage in the political process by raising funds and collectively participating in the election process, they shall comply with state law.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Mr. Garcia, does that, does that fit the bill for what you're desiring?
I think so. Can I, do you have that in writing so somebody could?
We won't be able to read it. You won't be able to read it. I'll give it to you, but you won't be able to read it.
Oh, no, I can't read that, never mind. It has all the marks all over it.
Mayor?
I'll have to read it.
Councilmember Garcia does have a motion on the table right now.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, so your motion is to delete Section Four?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and stick with my motion, and then I'll make a second motion if that one doesn't. No, yeah, that'll be my motion. That's my motion.
All right, do, do we have a second on that motion? It dies for lack of a second. Is there a motion regarding the wording that the city attorney has just shared?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number Forty-eight dash twenty twenty-one with the following amendment. Section Four, strike the word in Sentence One with charged, strike at urged. Urged to develop and carry out instead of charged with developing and carrying out. Okay? I then would ask in Section Four that we strike the sentence. The committee will be further charged with organizing and raising private funds for all costs associated with advertising and promoting a position on the bond matter before the voters and replace with?
Should the committee engage in the political process by raising funds and collectively participating in the election process, they shall comply with state law.
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Your motion is second. All right, further discussion?
Can I clarify, are you making the amendment in the same motion that you're making the motion to adopt?
Yes, that's what I said. To adopt the, the resolution with the following amendment.
Sure, okay.
Okay, so we're voting the resolution with the amendment presented by Ms. Clarkson and the city attorney.
Okay.
All right. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, all right, it passes unanimously. Now, I need to ask the two chiefs. Are, are you in agreement that we need a public safety complex?
You can answer now.
All right. Both, both chiefs say yes?
Yes, sir.
That carries, that carries a lot of weight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all right. Okay, now, let's go again, begin with place one and a cross, and I'll wrap it up. Who are you nominating to serve on this committee?
Starting with me?
Yeah.
Steve Lehman.
Okay.
And Barbara DeWell.
Okay.
Barbara?
DeWell.
DeWell, D-E-W-E-L-L, I believe.
Okay.
My appointments will be Gary Cochran and Justin McDonald.
Okay, all right. Ms. Agner?
My appointments will be John Harrison and Sandra Yarborough.
Okay, all right. Ms. Hughes?
My appointment will be T. Lang Guerero. It's spelled L-A-Y-N-G-G-U-E-R-R-I-E-R-O. And Glenn Andrew.
Okay, all right. My two appointments are Jim Thomas and Tony Leonard. And I would like to ask John Harrison to serve as the chairman of this committee. Do I need to ask him if he agrees?
Is he good with that?
Yeah, okay, good, all right, thank you. Okay. Are we ready to go to seven D?
I think so.
Yes, sir.
Mayoral, I don't have any other elements to present to you on seven D, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. All right, if you'll read it in, Ms. McLenon?
Professional Services Agreement with Randall Scott Architects in regards of facilitation of a Citizen Public Safety Facility Bond Committee and feasibility analysis of a potential public safety complex. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, okay. Mr. Hoppe, clarification?
Again, as presented just a second ago, essentially, this will be, allow us to utilize the professional expertise of an architecture firm that builds public safety facilities all over the state of Texas to be able to provide assistance to this committee as well as staff and council as we progress over this dialogue over the next four or five months.
Okay, all right. Council, beginning place one?
So looking at the, the architect and the consultant that we're going to be using, the information that they're, I mean, I guess they're going to be using their expertise and their knowledge, but are they also and mainly going to be referring to the space, Space Needs Assessment that was done? Is that their primary source of information or?
That, and certainly the two new chiefs that we have. So, you know, the chiefs have had an opportunity, these, these are two different chiefs than the Space Needs Assessment that was conducted back in fiscal year 2018. And so, they've had an opportunity to look at that, they've got some comments, and so, it's not, we're not scoped to be able to go do a full-blown new Space Needs Assessment, and those haven't changed significantly. But certainly, they're going to be looking at that and combining that with the comments from the chiefs and being able to reiterate to this committee and to this council on, on what their assessment is of, of what those space needs are. Did I answer your question?
It did. I guess I'm just really trying to figure out, is there anything that we can do with the Space Needs Assessment that we have, and of course, the very competent staff that we have too, that, is there something that we can do here in-house that the consultant will be able to do? I mean, I feel like we have the Space Needs Assessment, all that information ready. We have the staff, they know what they need. And we're putting this committee together now to discuss it. What would the consultant be giving the city by, you know, putting in that agreement together?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I think one of the biggest elements is really kind of going through that educational process, right, about the difference between building a commercial building, or even another municipal facility for that matter, and building a public safety complex, right? And so, there are some unique facets, both prescribed by state law, as well as just modern practice and operational need, that I think that they can help really provide an educational benefit to the community in, in what those requirements are and why some of those construction costs are different than what you might see for a normal construction project.
Okay, and that information is just not present in the assessment?
No, sir, not to the degree that, that I think is going to be necessary to be relayed to the community, to this committee. In addition, you know, I think that we've seen a, a change. I mean, obviously, over fiscal year 2018, we're now in fiscal year 22, and so, time has elapsed, right? And so, they have built several of these facilities over that three, four-year time span, and so, I think they provide a unique value in being able to explain to the community what can, you know, current construction cost for these type of facilities looks like.
Okay, was this something that we budgeted for?
No, sir. We're going to have to tap into contingency for this. Again, as we were moving through the budget process, as you recall, we had budgeted the use of certificates of obligation for real estate and architecture services. So no, we, we anticipated being able to go into a design phase post a, a real estate purchase.
Okay. I'm really just looking, I have nothing against, you know, the whole project as a whole or the committee's work, but I'm really looking at is saving the taxpayers some money. And it's, I know we, I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but we spent money getting that Space Needs Assessment done, counsel. And I don't, you know, I, I don't have the expertise and the knowledge that those architects probably have, but in terms of getting everything that we have now, I'm always looking at making sure we say, as we always say on the conservative side of things, and if we don't need to spend the money for a consultant, then we probably shouldn't. So that's just what I'm looking at in that aspect. I guess I have no further questions. Thank you.
Okay.
My comment, I guess, would be in regard to saving money, being able to acquire real estate and use certificates of obligation would have precluded us from needing additional expertise. My feeling is that because, because we were not allowed to utilize that process, and we have to back, we have to backtrack at this point, and that's what I think with the consultants, the knowledge, the information, and the uniqueness of a bond election that we haven't had in twenty-some-odd years, that that expertise will be beneficial to, to us moving forward.
Ms. Agner?
Just want to add that, that we knew that going with a bond was going to cost us additional money, and it's just part of doing business.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, I would say, I am, I am with, with Mr. Garcia on the point of continuing to look at how can we save taxpayers money? When I came on the council, I thought we were using too many consultants. What I've found is, though, if you get a good consultant that is doing very specific work around the state and beyond, they can show you how you can save money. And the thing that we were talking about while I go of, like this committee going to some other sites where they've built public safety complexes, that's another way to look at, you know, how can we do it, do it well, but also not spend additional money? So I think, I think they can, if they do their job, they can save us money.
Yes, sir.
All right, do we, do we have a, do we have a speaker?
Yes, sir, Bill Morgan.
Okay, he's passed, okay. All right. Do we have a motion on this matter?
I'll go ahead and make one additional comment if I may, mayor, just briefly. I know it's been said a couple of times, but council always had, the city always had the choice to, and had the opportunity to put the measure on the ballot in November. City chose not to.
No, no, we didn't, by the timing of when the petitions came in and were certified, it was, we didn't have the time to put it on in November.
Right, well, and excuse me if I can just finish, please. The, you're correct in that, in that standpoint, but before the petition came to council, we had the opportunity to do so. So I just want to clarify that. I did make a motion before, way before, it was probably in June, I believe it was June 22nd, if I'm not mistaken, to put the measure on the ballot for the citizens to vote on. That was way, well before the deadline to do so. So I just want to clarify the fact that the petition wasn't the thing that stopped us, the city chose not to.
Okay.
That's an opinion, Mr. Garcia, that you made. We've had council discussion from one to the other, and it doesn't always have to go back to you and how you did this or that. I would just appreciate us going down the row and just having discussion about the item and not having to come back and always wrap it around to personal, what I, you know, what I did.
No, I didn't make it personal, I was just clarifying a statement you said. You said we were not allowed to use that process.
All right, let's, let's move on. We have a motion second on this matter?
I will move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a professional services agreement with Randall Scott Architects.
I'll second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Any opposed but like sign, it's unanimous. Let's go to the financial report. Here's Julie. Julie Behrens, our Director of Finance.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to give you a summary. Kind of a summary of where we are in the process for year end. So as you know, our year is closed, and on 10/1, we started our year-end close process that will go through the first week of November, bringing in those last numbers. Numbers presented tonight are still estimated, but a lot more firm than I was able to give you last month. Some of our numbers will still be affected by year-end accrual process, especially on the revenue side, although most of those, we've already done the estimations, and so it's just a matter of when the actuals come in and how we go back and do those adjustments based on what we've estimated. Lot of good news stories throughout, as we've continued to talk about, even given the pandemic and unexpected winter storm and, and all the events that we've kind of had to deal with over the past couple of years. Staff has really done a good job of planning strategically, managing budgets, and spending responsibly, and our revenues have continued to be strong, so a lot of things to be proud of. Just a side note, we have received a grant award letter from FEMA that's awarding us $106,000 from Winter Storm Uri, which is reimbursement for $141,000 of eligible expenses. There was a lot of work put into that, but we're very proud that that's finally on the table. That will be fiscal year 22 revenue, but just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight. And working through several other grant opportunities that, you know, will help us mitigate emergencies in the future. You're going to notice a couple of changes in the numbers compared to what you see in your packet on Friday, and that's because we've had another week of expenses, so we're a lot closer to getting you a solid number, and I wanted to make sure you got the most recent numbers. So what you have in front of you is, is some updated numbers based on some larger expenses that we had come through last week, so I thought it was better to do it now than wait a month to give you a better look. So property tax coming in about the same as we estimated last month, $78,000 better than budget. Keep in mind, most of this is related to prior year payments or penalties and interest that have come in. That's difficult to budget because those are outstanding amounts that we just don't know who's going to pay and who's not, so that's what that's related to. Sales tax continues to be strong. We're estimating the year-to-end 1.5 million better than budget. Keep in mind, we did budget very conservatively for fiscal year 21, not really knowing what to expect with COVID and, and where we were at the time we were creating the budget. However, we're still seeing double-digit increases every month without any out-of-period payments or anything that's unusual going on, so maintaining strong growth there, and we're hoping that's going to continue. This, next slide is just giving you an overview like I gave you last month, it's just showing you an overview of revenues as they're presented in the budget book by category, just so you can follow a little bit better when you do see the final numbers about how they're coming in and, and how different lines are affected, so a little more detail here. Again, this number is, we're expected to end 1.9 million dollars better than budget, but keep in mind, 1.5 million of that is related to sales tax on the revenue side. Once we have final numbers, then of course, we'll be coming to you to discuss reallocation of any leftover funds for the year. On the expense side of the general fund, again, this is by category. Remember that I did give you some updated numbers here, so we had a couple of large streets paving invoices come in last week, so you'll see this to be really close to what I expect it to be with all of invoices in as of 9:30, so unless there's anything unexpected that we, we haven't anticipated, we feel pretty strong about this number. Keep in mind, we're better than budget in personnel, of course, from some vacancies, staffing vacancies, primarily in police and fire, but also in a few other departments. Paving is included in the maintenance category, so as you look at numbers, just think about that's where, that's where that expense comes. And remember that paving, as they talked about before, it's a lot about timing, rain, contractor, material supplies, and things like that that they're dealing with right now, too. Moving on to the water fund. So again, we have done some accrual and estimation here, and we feel pretty good about estimating worse-than-budget on water sales of about 270,000. Keep in mind, we still have November bills that haven't come in yet, so we have estimated November bills and accrued that as date, but we will adjust that once those final bills come in, so that could change slightly. Again, you can see how heavily water sales are impacted by rain, and when we've had a lot of extra rain during the primary irrigation months, it, it really drives water revenues down. On the sewer side?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Even though they're not quite, they, they, they come close.
Even though they're not quite, they, they come close to offsetting each other. And this is, is this our second year of having the new structure in place, right?
That's correct.
Did we have some things, I know it's seasonal and rain, I'm sorry, not seasonal, but rain affects this. But did we see something similar to this last year? Or is it more significant in the way that it ends the year this year?
I would have to go back and look at last year's numbers to be able to tell you exactly.
I just wonder if there's like a trend? Are we, are we budgeting, are we, you know, if we continue to trend this way, are we adjusting the budget for that?
We do, as we go along. And we talked a little bit about last time, how we do those trends. So, we take actual consumption for an average rainfall year, calculate growth in that factor and then assume that that's what our consumption is going to be, give or take. You know, using an average rainfall year, it can change significantly, especially when we have July and August being our wet months. And that's when a lot of our water sales actually happen. I can get you an answer on that trend for sure, but it is interesting.
We had something similar in business where we had kind of some cost adjustments.
Right.
And we're in year three as well. And we're seeing the trends kind of are different than what we anticipated. We kind of made some adjustments to those two items that were kind of offsetting each other. It's just a similar, it's just a similar scenario to this, I was just curious.
Right, no, that's a good question. I can definitely give you an exact where we ended the year last year for water sales, just for comparison. We are running about 7% behind last year on water sales, if that gives you any indication of what that looked like last year and how that compared to last year's budget, I would have to look at. But as a trend, we're about 7% less on the sales side, not necessarily on the consumption side, but on the sales side specifically, looking at residential. And then, yes, there is definitely, you can tell a relationship in the rate structure when we look at sewer, because it's better than budget, keeping in mind that that's kind of a constant, especially on the, not necessarily on the commercial side, but on the residential side where a lot of our usage actually happens, a lot of our revenues come from, because that's a real stable revenue stream because of the rate structure and the way we do residential sewer averaging there. We are estimating the total water fund, though, to be better than budget. So, that's good news. Lot of drivers there, obviously, the sewer somewhat offsetting the water. We talked before about waste disposal fees are 55,000 ahead of budget, which is really good, things going on over at the water reclamation plant. Water taps and other miscellaneous fees are also running ahead of budget. So, those are things that are driving our total fund to be better than budget. Again, a little more detail here, just so that you can see everything outlined by category. Nothing new really than we just talked about. We will have that year-end true-up or that accrual process that we'll do once we get the final November billings in. So, we'll be able to give you pretty solid numbers. Once we have that in, the next time I come to you, it will be with final numbers. Looking at expenses on the water side, estimating a better-than-budget of 419,000. Primarily, you'll see the maintenance and supplies. So, that's going to be, you know, chemicals and those kind of things. Also, services, keep in mind, that's water, electric and natural gas. And those things are very hard to budget. So, looking at ending the year better-than-budget on that as well. Briefly, we'll go over these smaller funds. I know we've talked about this month after month and the good news stories with golf. So, estimating that we're going to end the year about 190,000 better-than-budget. So, golf's had a really good year, a really solid year. And they're going to end that positive, which is such a good thing. And I think that we'll continue to sing their praises for a while with what they're doing for the course conditions over there, customer service and just a lot of things they're doing to drive repeat, repeat business. So, we're getting a lot of good feedback from the golf course. Looking at Development Services Fund, estimating very, very close to what we talked about last month, expecting a net loss of 131,000. I believe last month, we talked about 130, so pretty close. These are really solid numbers. I don't expect to see a lot of changes here. Again, a lot of this is driven by timing of projects. And, you know, we budget based on what we expect to see. You never really know when projects are going to land. We're already seeing some of the fiscal year 22 projects coming in, is what we're being told. So, hoping that we can recoup some of that in this fiscal year. But we do have a very healthy fund balance, which we've built up to kind of offset the unknowns. Hotel motel tax, again, really close to what we brought last month. We did budget conservatively in fiscal year 21, but we are really a big drive destination. And I believe that our staff has done a really good job of planning and coordinating events that are going to bring more people in to spend time in Kerrville. And so, it's nice to see some of those events come back. And our staff do spend a lot of time coordinating those efforts to make sure that people have something to do and that this is a place that people want to come. Remember that these funds can only be used to support tourism. So, this money can't be used in any way other than supporting tourism. So, anything that we spend project-related is driven or is designed to bring tourism to Kerrville. Okay, quick overview, and we've talked about this year-end process before, but just a few reminders. Our year-end close process will continue through the first week of November. We are knee-deep in audit right now. So, doing preparation for our mid-November actual audit, where auditors will be here and also conducting audit virtually. And then, with the change in the meetings and the cancellations in November meetings, I'm not certain that I will bring a financial report to you in November. It might be a little too soon. However, the next financial report I bring to you will involve year-end numbers. So, you can see how we actually final, finally landed for the year. And then, in December or January, we'll be having some discussions about how to reallocate any remaining funds that we have left over at the end of the year. And then, in February, of course, we'll be bringing you our annual financial report that will be given to you by BKD, our auditors, and we'll be starring budget again. Happy to take any questions.
Good report, good to hear.
Thank you.
Good news, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. All right, let's look at the COVID-19 preparedness, our latest stats. Chief Maloney.
So, in front of you have a PowerPoint presentation regarding the COVID-19 update. Give you, maybe, I believe, it'll be the last for a little while, kind of an update for our community and region with what we're seeing. So, with Kerrville and Kirk County, currently, we're at 85 active cases. As I said, the active cases, I always think, has been a little low on that end. But overall, when you look at regionally and state, we're absolutely on the deceleration phase of the pandemic, of this spike. And that numbers are significantly starting to drop in the region. 132 deaths are recorded through DSHS, over 6,000 recovered. And the good news is, and this is what I'll talk about the next slide, too, is that it's seven hospitalized is what we have. So, we definitely, that's one that I've said through the beginning as we've been kind of monitoring the pandemic, is the, is the hospitalizations. And that's what we're watching closely for that. And so, you can see here, I took out the slide that had the active cases because that was a bit of a challenge or a lag with the state catching up. And but this is actually more truer to what Peterson is showing for the last spike that showed up on June 28th. Very similar timelines, when you look at all three spikes together, they married up very nicely as far as time. And you can see on October 26th, actually, it's seven today is where we're at. So, that is good news, that is refreshing news for our community. 44 is way too high, it's too much to manage with Peterson. Next, next slide. So, local update, so we've, we continue to improve a little bit. So, we made over the 50% mark. So, that is good, but we're still tracking about the same for the state. So, the state is also has 63.8% of Texas residents are fully vaccinated. In Kirk County, we're still at 50%. So, and then 65+, we're almost making 65%, but 80% of Texas residents. So, we've been about the same all the way through. The vaccination, we've been behind the, as a percentage for the Texas residents. Vaccinations by age, not a significant change since the last time I reported out about a month ago. So, have a few more numbers in those, but once again, not, not significant for that. Vaccine and testing, so vaccine and test, oh, I'm sorry. Vaccine updates, so vaccine updates that we're looking at right now. Pfizer has full FDA approval, that hasn't changed. So, for 16+, and then the emergency youth authorization is a two-dose for those 12 to 15. And they are hoping to go on October 26th to an FDA panel to get approval for the five-to-11-year-old age group also. Moderna is still under the emergency youth authorization, so that is for 18+. So, they're still under request with the FDA to get full approval. And then Johnson &amp; Johnson's still under emergency youth authorization and hoping to get that approval by the end of the year. The boosters are out, that's the big conversation that is out right now. Boosters are available for the Pfizer, Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, recommendation, 65 years plus if you live in a long-term care facility, if you have underlying medical conditions or you're working in those high-risk settings. The vaccine, next slide. Vaccine and testing availability hasn't changed here. So, all our pharmacies are still providing the same vaccines as they did before. So, the vaccines for HGB, the Pfizer and the Moderna, the testing at-home test are pretty much what we're seeing more and more out there at our local pharmacies that are available. Walgreen has the Pfizer only, Walmart the Pfizer. They do have the Moderna at Walmart for the booster. We'll probably see the phase-in of a few more of the Moderna at the pharmacies, I would presume, with the booster being approved. Because as y'all remember, initially, when we were getting the vaccine for Kirk County, the majority of what we had here was the Moderna for that. Next slide. CVS has the Moderna, Peterson Urgent Care, they do have some of the vaccines, but you have to call for an appointment. And then, the Franklin Clinic does not have the vaccine. Next slide. So, where do we go from here? As you come out of the deceleration phase with that interval, you come into a preparation stage of what we need to do next. So, one of the things that, what steps can we take to prepare for another spike? I hope we don't have one, but in the unlikely event we do, this is an opportunity for us to take a look at what we need to do as an organization. So, moving forward, encourage the flu vaccine. So, that's been provided for city employees. We have the county-wide flu vaccine. Procure any PPE that is available. So, this is an opportunity if you're, as organizations are low on masks or low on hand sanitizer, this is the time to take a look at what your needs are. Review your best practices, that's what we're doing internally. We're reviewing our internal policies. So, we made a recent change based for first responders and then reviewing the emergency management plan. So, we're taking a look at that, too, just to make sure that we're prepared if there is another spike. And as always during this, we'll be continued surveillance and monitoring locally, regionally and statewide to make sure we keep you all informed if there's any changes in the future. And with that, any questions?
I just wondered, is with the, looking like they're going to have it for younger children, will it probably be available as it is now at different pharmacies and that type of thing?
Correct, so, once that does become available with the FDA, which is the presumption for that, that the local pharmacies will be able to provide that.
To do, thank you.
That is the Pfizer, so.
All right, thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've come now to board appointments. Ms. Garcia, Ms. Garcia, sure. Ms. Macklin, would you read that in, then I'll call Mr. Garcia to present this.
Appointment to the Main Street Advisory Board.
All right, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, so counsel, the mayor and I are the interview committee, interview team for this board. And we discussed the applicants. We have three that we received, Michael, Lonza and Marvin. We are recommending Lonza and, I'm sorry, wait.
Lonza Teague?
Yes, Lonza and, and Michael. We received the applicant Marvin, he has a virtual business. And so, it doesn't go within the qualifications of having a business within the zone or owning property within there. As he put in his application, he's wherever he wants to be. So, unfortunately, because of that, he doesn't meet the qualifications. So, we are recommending those two applicants.
Do you want to specify that Michael Kelleher is a reappointment? And Lonza Teague is a new appointment?
That's correct, yes. And so, I'll make that in the form of a motion to appoint this, too.
Michael Kelleher will actually be a new appointment also.
I thought he was, too, as I didn't see him on the.
He's new also.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, my.
Excuse me.
It's all right.
And mayor, we do have one citizen speaker.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Wolf says no. All right. Do I have a motion on this matter or is there any further discussion?
He made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion's made.
I'll second that.
Second, okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands, okay. And I ask this question from time to time. Do you desire to go into an executive session and extend this meeting?